Everybody ready? It's seven o'clock, so let's call this regular meeting of the Garfield Township Planning Commission to order. And first order of business is we typically recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, are you going to take a roll call?
Sure, Dee Good.
Here.
Fudge?
Here.
Augustinelli?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Robertson?
Here.
McManus?
Here.
And Racine?
Here.
Next up is the first of what tonight would be several public comment periods. If anybody has anything they want to tell us about anything, you're free to come forward now. We just ask that you come to the microphone so that the fellow in the back there can record things for folks that are listening at home. And if you have something you'd like to say that pertains to one of the particular items that we're going to have a formal public hearing on tonight, which would be the Durga rezoning request, the portable storage solutions special use permit, and our R2/R3 proposed zoning ordinance change, you might find it more, we're more focused on those things when we get to those actual items on the agenda. But at any rate, if anybody would like to come forward, please do so. And as usual, there's no rush of public comment, so we'll close the first public comment. Next up is a review, and we need approval of the agenda. If anybody has any conflicts of interest, we need to hear about that as well.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any other discussion on that? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next up is a review of the minutes from our August 23 meeting. Does anybody have any proposed modifications to those?
Make a motion the minutes be accepted.
Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next on the agenda is correspondence. John, do we have any correspondence to be made aware of?
Just one item that we received by email. It's just a notice on your desk there from the Lelandal County Planning Commission. They're hosting a training event next Wednesday, September 20th, regarding preparing for big projects in your community. So that's just for your information.
All right, thank you. Next up is reports. Molly, any town board report this evening?
Just mentioned three things. The township has dropped our millage from two mills to 1.75, and that was approved last night. We gave the Class C liquor license to High Tops, which is at the Grand Travers Mall. They'll be taking over that Jonathan B Pub area. And the third thing is that supervisor and staff are reviewing how we might become a resort redevelopment area over by the Cherryland Mall.
What would that mean if we did?
Well, one thing, it would give us the ability to issue more liquor licenses, which is what kind of started the discussion. But I, I believe that there are other benefits of doing that. Maybe John knows more.
At this point, it was just related to, there's a redevelopment license for, through the Liquor Control Commission that could apply for that whole area. So even though it wouldn't work, didn't work for the Cherry, excuse me, the Curling Club, because it's a club that could, that same license could apply to that whole center. So if there are other, you know, entertainment or any other type of business that could be included in that license.
Okay. Thanks, Molly. Bobby, any ZBA report this evening?
No, sir, no meeting.
Okay. Chris, any Parks and Rec news?
Haven't had a meeting.
All right. And Joe, Joint Planning Commission?
Nothing, this is our last meeting.
I didn't think so. John or Steve, any staff report?
You have our PD monthly report in your packet. We just also want to make the announcement that we're still working on the master plan. So if people want to follow along on some of the update information, please check out the township webpage where we do have a, a master plan update page, and we're, we'll be populating that with information. Also did want to report that the Home Two Suites Hotel is started under construction. This was a project that was received, it's a used by right located behind Chick-fil-A. So that site is now underway, and that will hopefully, once that's completed, resolve and kind of close the case on that in terms of the parking, because that hotel will have shared parking with the Chick-fil-A.
Great.
Steve?
There's a couple of other things. Oh, also Meyer, you're in contact with the person from Meyer regarding that gate, so that's in progress.
That's in progress still.
And then also, the Michigan Association of Planning Conference is coming up in the next month, October 4th through 6th. Bob, you mentioned earlier you're interested in helping out with the mobile tour. We have a, it's being hosted by Traverse City, or the resort this year, so we are going to be hosting tours. Thank you for indicating you're interested in that. There's other training sessions out there. If anyone's interested in attending, even just for a day, we can send you the conference agenda, any descriptions. I'm helping host a trivia night, if anyone's interested in planning trivia, so. But also some good training opportunities for planning commissioners, so if you're interested, let us know.
All right, thanks, Steve. Moving along to unfinished business, first item up is item 6A, which is Planning Department Report 2023-108. We're having a public hearing about a possible rezoning to R3 of some property owned by somebody named Durga. Which one of you is going to tell us about that?
I'll start with that.
Who's going to cover this?
Mm-hmm. So we introduced this at the last meeting, but this property is over on Hartman, just that, I'll highlight it here on the screen, just to the west of Saban Data Center. Part of our parkland is here, and a couple doors down from Live Arbor is on Hartman Road. And the request is, the current zoning is rural residential, the request is rezoned to R3, multi-family residential. So the map that's up there is the zoning map, but the actual use along a good chunk of the north side of Hartman Road is multi-family residential through some planned unit developments. Both Live Arbers and Chelsea Park further to the west from here are multi fam, mostly multi-family, but done as planned unit developments. So at least through staff's findings, it's generally compatible, the zoning is generally compatible with things around it, and compatible with the future land use map, which shows high density residential as the future land use category, other than in the northwest corner where there's wetlands, and there it doesn't matter really what the zoning is because it's not going to be buildable in that corner, no matter what the zoning classification is. When reviewing rezoning, there's eight criteria, and so we have some staff comments on those eight criteria, but otherwise, purpose of holding this tonight is to hold the public hearing. Applicants are here as well to answer any questions, and if desired by Plan Commission to, forward to findings of fact.
Okay, thank you, Steve. So at this time, we'll open the floor to the public. If anybody has anything they want to ask or tell us about this particular request, again, please come forward and state your name and tell us what you want to tell us.
Good evening, I'm Gerda Durga. I'm the owner of the property identified as you just identified, oh five, oh twenty-two, oh twenty-three, zero, zero. I, so I can read that part to you, and I think you already have that in front.
Yeah, you don't have to tell us what, we've seen the report. We just wanted to know if anybody has anything they want to ask us or tell us that's not in the report. It's an opportunity for them.
No, I think we already stated, so I don't know what else I could ask you about that.
Okay, then if anybody else from the public has anything, we'll ask them to ask questions, and if they do, maybe we'll have you come back to answer, but.
Yeah, there are really no neighbors on that property that I could, who have any concern about anything about it.
I was wondering about, it looks like a couple of, maybe a property or two to the east, but not as deep a property. There's another, what looks like a single family dwelling there. What's the story?
You mean towards Cass?
Yes.
There was a single family, and then the township bought them out.
Okay.
When did it?
So there's no more residential property towards Cass?
Yes, there is two more.
Looks like there's a couple.
There's one on the corner, and then next to it.
Very corner, then you have part of Saban, then you have another single family, and then this one, it said, Road Commission.
Yeah.
Has purchased this one, and then Road Commission, I believe, has the one on the other side as well.
Can you go back, not the one immediately east of this parcel then, but the one east of that?
So the one with the house, yeah. I think that's just a single family that just has someone's name.
That's my question, what is going on on that parcel?
That just says someone's name, so yeah, I'm assuming that's an active single family.
And it doesn't butt up to that property?
No, it doesn't. It's just in the vicinity, and I wondered if they had any involvement in any of this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Durga. Anybody else with any comments they want to make on this? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, any comments, questions on this one? Seems like we looked at this a month or so ago and looked pretty straightforward, I think, but I don't know if anybody's had any other thoughts crossing their mind since then.
Is the piece to the west, is that, is that already zoned R3, or is that also still zoned? I know it's owned by the Road Commission.
Yeah, it's still rural residential.
Rural residential.
Yeah. There's no, there would be some orange in here if this was going to be, when this is R3.
Right, well, but the.
Yeah.
The Arbers one.
Oh, yeah, there's, because there's also the layer here, I can actually turn it on. So PUDs, since they kind of go above and beyond zoning, they're their own layer. So rather than rezoned R3, whenever this was approved decades ago, that was just done as a PUD. I think part of it was to preserve the piece that ended up part of our parkland, because that's actually part of the PUD. If you look at the original, like, PUD boundary, the Arbers, but that's why, that's one reason why that's that, and not just straight zoned R3.
Okay.
I just, I would like to ask the applicant one question, is that, have you had any conversation, if you could come back up, if you don't mind coming back up, with the Road Commission, since they own the piece next door and there's a lot of talk about, you'd have to go to the microphone.
We have to have you at the mic simply because somebody's recording the meeting, and if you talk to us, that your comments aren't going to be heard. Sorry.
So which, which parcel you're talking about, right?
Immediately west of your parcel is another parcel, looks like.
It belongs to the township, I was informed.
No, it's the Grand Travers County Road Commission.
Road Commission.
Not the township. The township doesn't own either piece alongside you, the Road Commission.
So it's the Road Commission on either side, yeah.
Yes, okay, so the Road Commission owns that. Well, with all the talk of the, of the connection, possible bridge, all those things, has there been any conversation with the Road Commission about, I think I'll, I'll use John's term from last meeting, any horse trading that, about giving up some road frontage for additional property behind, not losing any developable area, but making sure they have the road right of way they might need.
There was some conversation, I think it was 10 or 15 years ago, whether you want to put a bridge through, and, and, yeah.
I grew up on Hartman, so I've been, I'm very familiar with that area, but I just, just curious with all, if they've had any recent communication with the Road Commission?
No, I didn't know, I have to communicate with them.
No, you don't.
I didn't even know it belonged to the Road Commission. I thought it was my property. I know it was five acres, but I didn't know what the size is of five acres, so.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying that it's, you know, there's a lot going on there, and I didn't know if, there might have been an opportunity for, for, you know, some additional things going on there, but that's fine. I just, I'm just curious if you had any conversation with them, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Anybody else with any questions for Ms. Durga whilst she's up there? Okay, thank you. Staff, do you have any issues about, it's not really a spot zone issue, is it, where you got R2 next to R3, next to R2?
It matches future land use map, and it was one of these where the PUDs happened to be, because they were PUDs, just weren't done as a straight rezoning, so.
Okay.
I don't think there's any issues with that. And then with the Road Commission, so broader context is, Road Commission is looking at that crossing that was discussed 10 to 15 years ago, sort of reviewing the feasibility of that and gotten like somewhere along in that process. At some point down the line, they may, as part of that project, try to widen that road. That is not our project. We don't actually know if this is 100% going to happen yet, but regardless, no matter what the zoning, that's going, they're going to have to deal with that regardless of what the zoning is.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, just hadn't heard anything, yeah. So, yeah, just as the context, we did actually ask them, since they do own that piece and the other, one on the other side, we informed them of the rezoning and then asked them actually, since it matches the future land use map as well, would they be interested in also rezoning theirs? And we more just got acknowledgement that they acknowledged the current rezoning, but didn't really indicate either way, so someday down the line, we might get that too.
And they were noticed about this meeting?
They were noticed as well for this, yeah. So we haven't heard anything since then.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
People don't have any other questions or comments? Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to draft, direct staff to draft findings of fact for application Z 2023-02.
Support. Any further discussion on that motion?
Will that findings of fact be coming back to us? I don't see a date on that.
Yes. It would be for the October, what is it, 10th is the, whatever the first meeting.
Second Wednesday of October.
Second Wednesday of October.
That's normally in here, isn't it, when we, when we request it back?
Yes. Yeah, you would still look at findings, and then after findings, would forward it to the board. Board has to do their own public hearing as well, but you will see it one more time.
Right, I just usually in the motion, it.
Oh, I probably should have said.
To bring it back at a certain meeting, that's what I was asking.
You could add that if you would like. Do you amend the motion if you'd like?
I can amend that motion to include that it'll be back on October 10th.
I agree to the amendment.
Okay.
To be reviewed at the.
Get support for that already? I think there was.
Press.
Did you supply?
Yeah, I, I agree to the amendment.
It's the 4th of Wednesday? Or the, the dates? It's the 11th.
11?
It's the 11th, not the 10th.
The 1st is a Sunday, so it wouldn't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Something didn't add.
Yeah, so to be reviewed at the October 11th, 2023 Plan Commission meeting.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we'll deal with it again in a month and hopefully move it along. Okay, thank you. Next up is item 6B, Planning Department Report 2023-109, another public hearing, this one about a requested special use permit for portable storage solutions. Steve, going to cover this one?
Yes. So at your meeting last month, you received an introduction for a request for a special use permit for the property, 2550 Cass Road, to establish the retail industrial primary as, as the use on the site. It is zoned IG general mixed-use industrial business, so that's a use that is permitted by special use permit. Received introduction last month, and there were some items that staff had identified. Everything has been pretty much addressed. There were some items related, because there will be some outdoor storage on this particular site, so we met with the applicant and representatives, and there will be some added screening for the site, for some of the containers that will be on site. Also, there will be a display area at, on the front of the site near the building that will allow for two storage containers to be displayed. Our main concern on that was to make sure that there was some type of marking in terms of where they are located on the site, and they have provided a kind of a stone area through there that will ensure that there's not, that these don't kind of start floating around in the parking lot area, and so that they will be maintained behind that landscaping strip. The site does have some well-established landscaping on the front, the portion that does cover Cass Road, and because it's, they're not making other, you know, physical changes to the building, additions and so forth, they are exempt from our landscaping requirements, but those storage screening requirements still apply. They met, the rest of the items are rather minor, they provided dumpster enclosure information, added in the bike rack, the parking is pretty minimal, and they are going to be restriping those, and so that's all been kind of addressed within the site plan, so at this point, we're pretty comfortable with it being considered for the public hearing.
All right, we'll open up another public hearing. If anybody has anything they want to ask us or tell us about this one, please, again, come forward to the mic and tell us what you want to tell us. And as usual, I shouldn't say as usual, but as is often the case, doesn't look like anybody wants to talk to us about this one. So we'll close this public hearing, bring it back to Commissioner, Commissioners, thoughts?
Just a question, are we fine with the converting of shipping containers to mobile offices so that construction can happen under this new classification?
You mean the conversion of them? Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, our, our main concern is the storage of them, and, I mean, most of those activities are going to incur in, inside, but it's the storage on the outside that we're just concerned about.
Okay.
So, and incidentally, we did have the property owner to the south, along Cass Road, did, was in our office the other day, and did inquire about the public hearing as, as he received notice, so we did present him with the information, and he was fine with it, knowing that there wasn't going to be any major site improvements.
I was walking it the other day, it's got a lot of nice landscaping and a lot of woods along the south and, and the east already. Are you, staff satisfied with the proposed plantings that they'll do the job you want them to do for the screening of the exterior storage?
Well, yeah, I think it's fine. I think the, I think one of the things that, I think it's going to be pretty hard, I think you're still going to probably see some storage containers out there to some extent, I mean, that is part of their business. It's, it's the excessive amount that we didn't want to see, but in its impact on the roadway, but it's also set back quite a ways, at least the fenced-in area is set back quite a ways from, from Cass Road, and I think for what the use is, I think it's going to be, I think we're pretty satisfied with what they're proposing.
Commissioners, anybody else with any comments or questions for staff on this If not, anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to direct staff to prepare findings of fact for application SUP-2023-06, submitted by Northview 22 LLC for a special use permit for retail industrial primary use at parcel 05-022-027-15.
Support.
And would you guys like that findings of fact brought back to us on October 11th?
Yeah.
With the findings of fact brought back to us on October 11th.
Excellent. Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. See you later. Then the next item of unfinished business, item 6C, is Planning Department Report 2023-110, another public hearing, and this one pertains to some possible changes to the R2/R3 portion of the zoning ordinance. Senator Stevens, explain this one to anybody that might be interested?
So we've seen this one a couple of times, but as the staff and Planning Commission worked on these changes, so these are addressing some of the dimensional standards for the R2 district, the R2 residential zoning district, and the Garfield Township zoning ordinance is basically one family and primarily two families, so it's our, kind of our duplex, duplex zoning district. And then the other changes are red dimensional standards that are relate to the R3, which is the multi-family district. The multi-family district does permit one and two-family dwellings, but is primarily multi-family, so attached units that are in kind of typical apartments and so forth. So the dimensional standard changes are more streamlining the minimum lot areas in the R2 district, so that it's the same for either one family and two family, and also related to lot width, which the new language will provide something that's going to be a lot accommodating, and we did look at a lot of, some of our one and two-family, actually sites that have some of those smaller homes on smaller lots, and that's what this R2 does provide. And then on the R3, one of the things that we've changed is to make the two-family to be similar in terms of the one family for the minimum lot area. We still are maintaining the multi-family minimum lot areas, 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit. That is not changing. But probably the most important piece is our minimum lot width. We're, instead of having a sliding scale that was not really probably the idea for some of our multi-family lots, we're going with a flat number, basically for a multi-family development, you must have a minimum lot width of 100 feet. That will fit more to some of our areas that are currently zoned R3, and to accommodate some of those new apartment buildings. So these are the, the primary changes to those two particular districts.
Thanks, John. Once again, we'll open it up to the public. If anybody has anything you want to ask us or tell us about this item, please come
Did I understand it right, there are going to be a hearing in October about a Durga property?
Well, not really a hearing. We're going to have a, a meeting at which the staff will have brought back some paperwork for us to review. It's called findings of fact, and almost always, we prove those findings of fact, and then we recommend to the township board that they do what is proposed to be done, and then it'll be set for a hearing by the township board, probably what, another month or so after that. So there wouldn't be a hearing in October.
Oh, okay. I heard something about October 10th.
Well, that's when we meet next.
Okay.
We meet monthly.
Okay, I see.
And so that, the next part of the process on your proposal will come back to us after staff gives us more paperwork in a month.
So where would then be a meeting where I have to be here?
You don't have to be at that.
I don't have to be here.
You're welcome to be here, but you don't have to be here.
Okay, okay. So I'm all good? Because I'm traveling from New Orleans, so.
Enjoy New Orleans.
Well, she may want to be the town board public hearing.
Yeah, when the township board hearing happens, when would you guess that would, would that be November?
We, we can lay it out and do a draft schedule, yeah.
Most likely, let's say, okay, if it goes from the Planning Commission here on the 11th, it'll be for introduction at the second meeting in October in front of the board. That will probably be, it may not meet at the first board meeting of the, of November for the public hearing. Most likely, it might be December, actually, because there's not a, a lot of times the board doesn't have that second meeting.
Thanksgiving.
So December would be a meeting that I have to attend?
You don't have to attend anything.
Yeah. I think this is probably the most important one, so this, I think, pretty much the, the Planning Commission, that's a lot of these rezonings and having the public hearing. I think at this point, it's, it's pretty much in the process. The township board is mandated to have a public hearing because it will become part of the zoning ordinance, which is a law, and so they're required to do that. But I, I think it's safe to say that based on, you know, not, not any comments from many of your neighbors and every, and the way everything is, conforms to the township master plan, that it's safe to say this is going along smoothly.
All right. So I will be informed when I have to be here again?
We, we can let you know the whole process, and you are invited to be at any of them, but we understand you're traveling, you do not have to be at anything in particular, but we'll lay out kind of the projected rest of the process.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll follow up.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else want to talk to us about the R2/R3 rezoning district proposed amendment that staff just described? And again, it doesn't look like it, so we'll close that public hearing, and again, bring it back to the Commission. Commissioner, seems like we've looked at this internally, and it looked like it all made sense, but I don't know if anyone's got any other questions or comments they want to.
I'll make a motion to propose amendment to the Garfield Township zoning ordinance as attached to the Planning Department Report 2023-110 be recommended for adoption by the township board.
Skip the first motion. You skipped the first motion.
I'm sorry?
There's another motion on the bottom of the first page you skipped.
Oh, I missed one?
Yep.
No, I missed the first one. All right, I'll start with the first one then. Motion that the proposed amendment to the Garfield Township zoning ordinance is attached to the Planning Department 2023-110 be adopted and
Wait, it's the same motion? Of course not.
Yeah.
It's a doubleheader.
One's to adopt, one's to recommend adoption to the board.
Yeah, you know, and I don't know if technically if you're adopting, because I don't think you, I mean, I think it's more, probably more accepting of it. I don't know if you're, because you're really not incorporating.
Let me start over.
The other one is a recommendation to the, to the board for, that the board adopt.
All as one motion or two different motions?
We listed them as two. You could do them as one if you'd like, but
Well, the first one kind of ends with the word "and."
Yeah.
Yeah, that probably is a typo. Normally, we would not include two motions attached like that.
So, do you want to do it in two motions?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion that proposed amendment to the Garfield Township zoning ordinance, as attached to the Planning Department Report 2023-110, be adopted.
Support. Any further discussion on that motion?
We can't adopt the motion. I mean, we can't adopt the amendment.
Yeah, we can't really adopt it. What do we, I don't understand.
The township's board adopts the amendment. We only, I thought all we do is recommend that the township board adopt the amendment.
I think you're right. Right, that's what I was saying. I don't know if
Want to scratch the first one altogether?
I mean, that's, quite honestly, that's a practice of motions that we've kind of carried forward.
If we were adopting a finding of fact, we would adopt the finding of fact, and then they recommended the board to approve it.
Yeah.
There's no finding of fact here.
So, maybe we skip that first motion?
Because this was just a study from us. Yeah, that was probably the difference, yeah.
Now, let's go back to the original one then.
Sorry, Joe.
Five minutes ago, you had it right.
It sounded good the first time I read it. I'll make a motion that the proposed amendment to Garfield Township zoning ordinance, as attached to Planning Department Report 2023-110, be recommended for adoption by the township board.
Support.
Here we go.
And that's the only motion that we're going to vote on?
All right.
All right. Any further discussion on that particular motion? Chris?
I'm going to be a pain in the ass. We never withdrew the first emotion. It was never supported. It was never supported?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we had discussion.
No, I supported it.
I'm being a pain in the ass. I really don't care.
Oh, it's, you're, it's technically correct. Why don't we vote on this one, and then we'll go back and correct that?
Okay, I will, I will sleep better tonight if we do.
Yep, okay. So, all in favor of the motion that we recommend to the town board approval of this zoning amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Other than the last motion we voted on, I would withdraw all other motions I've made in reference to this topic. How's that?
Amen.
You second it, and are you okay with me withdrawing it?
Okay, so that motion's withdrawn. All right, thank you. Can you sleep now?
I can sleep now.
All right. I don't want to be responsible for insomnia.
I was still looking for the second half of the first motion.
All right. Next up on the agenda is new business, and I don't see anything written here. Is there any new business we need to be aware of?
There is not.
Okay, and next, moving along, as if we needed more of it, but we have it on the agenda. It's another public comment period. If anybody wants to tell us or ask us anything, you're free to do so right now. And I think we would have heard from you by now if you wanted to talk to us, so we'll close this public comment as well. Next up is other business. Is there any other business?
Is the, I'll be like, be like Chris and be a pain in the thorn, but, you know, I drive by the Beta Project daily. Seeing a tremendous amount of progress on the Beta Building. I'm seeing no movement on their housing. They're clear that they don't move into that building until the housing is, what's the term that we have there? We're covered, I would hope they're correct. That they won't move into that building until that housing is being built.
The housing has, if I recall right, it's the housing has to start.
Yeah, groundwork is being done. They're putting in some
And it's not just
There's a lot of work being done there on site.
Clarification, it's not just that building. They also have to include the transfer station as well.
Well, the transfer station and the commercial piece are all they're working on over there. I don't think they've started anything on the residential piece.
They have not.
They've done some underground work, but that's
Yeah, that's it. They've, they're moving earth, you know.
They have not worked, they have not started on the housing, because I'm still talking with the developers of the housing on that particular project.
I just don't want a big disappointment on their part when they're not going to be moving in that building if they haven't started the construction.
I don't know how we could have been any clearer.
I agree with you, John, but I'm just saying, the Beta's moving 100 miles an hour, and the residential hasn't gotten off step one yet.
We can restate that to Beta to be, make them aware of that, remind them.
Beta understands, and you're still looking at nine months to a year before they're ready to move.
Okay. Yes, it just won't hurt to keep reminding them.
They're two or three months ahead of schedule. The building's going up fast.
Well, let's clarify exactly what you said. Is it bricks and mortar have to be there, or they just have to turn dirt, or?
I'd really like to look at the file for that, but I'm pretty sure we were, whatever that exact language is, we'll restate that back to them. It's not coming clear to the top of my head, so I'd hate to say something that I don't know for certain, but we will follow up on that, and we'll send them a communication. Like I said, I have been in talking with the developers of the housing, so they are finalizing their plans for those buildings.
Good. All right, good. Just throwing it out there, so.
Anybody else with any other business they want to talk about? And then moving along, the next item on the agenda is items for our next agenda, which we are meeting in two weeks. I told you we meet monthly. We do our regular business monthly, and then every two weeks after that, we do what they call a study session, so it's not really a, you know, formal business then. And it looks like what's scheduled for that meeting in two weeks is some more discussion on the master plan update. That's, that's all that you're aware of at this point that's going to be on that agenda.
That'll be enough.
Pretty much, yeah.
And I'm going to be gone for that, but Joe said he's going to be here, so do we look like, most people are going to make it to the meeting on September 27th, so we don't have any quorum issues?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'll be back for the October one, but I'll, the one in two weeks.
On the 27th, I'm in Lansing. I should be back in time for this meeting.
Okay.
But if I'm delayed, I might not make it back.
Looks like we still have a quorum.
We're still have five, yeah.
And it's, it's discussion, so
Yeah, no motions.
It'll be something that we'll be talking over the next couple of months, so.
You have two study sessions left in the year, but then like in November and December, we can use regular meetings. But it's also, at this point in reviewing the master plan, you've reviewed existing conditions, you've reviewed different chapters. It's all just putting it together. Sorry for my voice.
You don't sound like you're feeling too good.
I've got some ReCola, so, yeah.
Keep those germs there.
Yeah.
I got to get out of here. I got to get out healthy. Any, any other business for the good of the order?
I got a little, that, a long time ago, we brought up the fact about the road commission, and I see the street plans on that next agenda. So, has any conversation ever been talked about with them about the two roads that they shut off to the trucks about getting them back going, which was Silver Pines and Oak Road?
I have not talked with them about it.
So, is what my question, I guess, is can, don't they have to do anything with the townships or public to shut off a road?
I do not. I don't know.
If the township could ask them, I think it would be better than myself going to ask them about why them are off, because they're both, both our township roads are, but I think that township has more pull than them.
They're in the township, they're county roads, but Silver Pines and what's the other one?
The other one's Oak Road.
Oak Road, okay. So, you're just, you're talking about the weight limits on?
The limits are that, no truck signs.
Okay, no truck signs. There is, there wasn't yesterday, but there has been representative from the road commission has attended some of the township board meetings to update the township board on road commission activity. We can reach out that way, but we can also email them as well and make outreach to them.
Does that extend on that piece of pot from, that becomes Potter?
I don't know about that little bit. It's the main old Oak Road. I think that they got the, no truck signs, so it stops at Rouge. I believe it starts at the Baitner, and it goes up Oak, and I think, because that's really Potter Road after you cross Rouge.
Yeah, just, yeah.
So, I think, I think them truck signs are just on the Oak Road's part, but anyway, my opinion is it shouldn't be on any of them, only during the frost laws or the seasonal part of the, and the same with Silver Pines that and I can see them, McCray Hill, they have, they've been talking about that for a long time, that that's an old state road, and it's concrete underneath, and it's not. But that don't go anywhere. So, that's not, that's not an issue, the McCray Hill Road is not, but the Silver Pines and the Oak Road are cross conduction that I feel should still be truck routes.
Well, how are they getting the heavy equipment into the subdivision on that, crack, it's not Garfield Township, but
Oh, they can still use Rouge Road. They just can't go up Oak.
That's a lot worse shape than
Right.
Anybody else with anything for the good of the order? I'll make a motion. We adjourn. We're adjourned.